The city of Barry is exploring third-party providers to install and upgrade electric vehicle charging stations. During the Tuesdays, General Committee meeting at Barry City Hall, Ward Nine Councillor Sergio Morales proposed an amendment concerning electric vehicle charging stations. Hi, this is Deepak. You are watching Simcoe Community Media. The original motion proposes outsourcing the management and upgrading of the electric vehicle supply equipment, EVSE, in the downtown area. There are five points to this original motion. Third-party provider to install and upgrade downtown EVSE at no cost to the city. Provider to decide on the number and locations of EVSE in consultation with the city. Provider responsible for managing maintenance, client services, and fee collection. All operating and maintenance costs to be handled by the third-party provider. And, provider must supply the city with usage data for the EVSE. While the amendment by Morales aimed to prioritize cost recovery over profit in the management of the stations. A plan to outsource the operation and maintenance of city's EV charging infrastructure to third parties sparked a lengthy debate among council members about the implications of such a move.
What is the expected return on investment from outsourcing?
So, we are not expecting to make money off this. We're expecting to not incur any costs.
What's the expected return for the third-party organization?
Your worship, that, I can't answer that. That'd be a question that we'd ask as part of the RFP.
And are there other municipalities that have taken this approach?
Yes, your worship, there are.
Is there any way before next week, we can get some of their data with relation to the, you know, rates and returns that these third-party organizations are seeing?
We can certainly try.
Barry's current charging infrastructure was supported by Tesla, at no cost to Barry's taxpayers. Tesla covered all costs-
It may be off by about twenty or thirty thousand, but it was two fifty to three hundred thousand dollars. And it was at no cost to the city of Barry taxpayer. Tesla paid for the concrete, the installation, absolutely everything.
And with relation to the question about Tesla, was there anything inside their agreement that stopped us from allowing others to profit off of it?
Your worship, none whatsoever. Once they are provided to the city, the city owns them outright. We can do what we want with them.
The potential for accessing grant funding was also discussed, with specific reference to a ninety million dollars fund from the Ministry of Transportation of Ontario for EV charging stations. One of the biggest concern was to ensure the city did not incur any losses from managing the infrastructure, rather than generating profit. Following is the video of the meeting.
Now, we're onto FAC zero zero one dash two four, Councillor Morales.
Thank you, Mayor Nettle. I'd like to put the aforementioned report on the floor as printed, and I have an amendment. The amendment is to amend Section C to add, add to it, after the semicolon, I have it here. Collecting, a comma, or you can leave the semicolon, collecting and overseeing, sorry, that was already in there, semicolon, give me one second. That was a frame of reference I wrote. So, the amendment says follows: with the aim towards cost recovery, comma, and not profit. And I can speak to that.
Go ahead, councillor.
Thank you, Mayor Nettle. Mayor Nettle, if we went back in time right now, and we told 2017 me that we'd have a staff report to financialize EV charging stations, I'm sure 2017 me would probably rack up an IC report, a voluntary guilty charge, and I would have a thing or two to say. However, here we are, and you know what? It's time. What I mean by it's time, and I'll be supportive, obviously, of the amendment and the main recommended motion, here's why it's time. It's not because of the whole cultural war issue of like, well, I drive a car, and EV drivers don't pay the gas. It's beyond that. I like Mustangs, I like cars, I understand about the need to transition to sustainable electrification in our vehicular infrastructure. Why I say it's time is, it's getting to the point where it's beyond staff's capacity to run these machines, to fix these machines, to administer these machines, to work out those kinks about people parking. We essentially need to outsource the management. And there is a bit of fairness that when there's a new technology, when it has, when there's low demand at the beginning, when it has ecological, environmental, and different benefits, you need to subsidize it. I'm sure people would be surprised at how much, if they really looked into it, how much the gas industry's subsidized, how much farmers are subsidized, how much other aspects are subsidized. And so, we did that with EVs. And Barry was a leader of that, and I'm very proud about how everyone came together to do that. Why I think it's time to do it now is, it's something that I think Councillor Nixon has brought up a few instances in his ward, you've pointed it out, Mayor Nettle, is, we need to outsource to people who can manage these, and enough companies have popped up in the market that can do this effectively, efficiently, and well. We need to have KPIs on the usage as well. And then also, any monies, any revenues that we raise can be reinvested in fixing these machines, maintaining them, and possibly expanding them in strategic locations. So, for people who have EVs and who are supportive of the industry, this is actually in order to increase capacity. The reason for my specific amendment is, these tenders, these companies aim to make a profit, don't get me, they're not just out of the goodness of their heart. So, I don't want this to quickly, for us to go down the rabbit hole of going from no-cost charging, and by the way, it's level two, so for anybody thinking that somebody in a hundred thousand dollar Tesla is getting all this free money, they'd have to sit there for four to six hours, and I'm sure their time is worth something. So, level-two charging is quite slow. I don't want this to go from free level-two charging to it being chasing the almighty dollar. And I'm not restricting it, it doesn't have to be necessarily break even, that's why my wording was very intentional, aimed towards cost recovery. That might be a reasonable percentage of a profit margin to address unforeseen events, but I want to make sure that we are outsourcing this public service, not privatizing it, Mayor Nettle. So, that's the logic to my amendment, and I apologize for this, but this has always been an issue near and dear to my heart.
Could you read out the amendment again for me, please?
Section C, that the following be added to the end of Section C, with the aim towards cost recovery, comma, and not profit. And not profit. And so, once again, the wording is purposely flexible, that it doesn't say that it has to be break even. The aim can be not profit and still have a build-in margin for cost overruns. So, I'll leave it there, if there's any questions.
Yeah, thank you. I'm going to go to Councillor Congle, then I'm going to go to Councillor Harvey. So, Councillor Congle, the floor is yours.
Thank you through you, Chair Nettle, to Councillor Morales. When I'm reading that in the context, I'm reading your amendment in relationship to the benefit of the third party. So, are you actually indicating, is your intent on that amendment, that the third party is actually making more money or cost recovery? I'm not seeing that there's a benefit to the city. Can you clarify your amendment intent?
Through you, Mayor Nettle, to Councillor Congle. The intent of my language would be that I don't want, I don't want the chosen third party to come back and say, well, market rates are at two fifty, but because you're a really awesome city, and because you're halfway to Muskoka, et cetera, that you should charge four. And then, in the absence of knowing any better, we go, okay, let's go four. Everyone does two, doing two fifty. The more money we make, the more money they make. I don't want that to be what drives it. I'm fully aware that, my amendment wasn't to say that the third party should make no profit. That would be ridiculous, that would be handicapping a procurement process. They can definitely make their money. But in terms of, at the end of the day, they can still administer this program, and there's certain capital costs that we, they're like a property manager. You know, you can be the, we are the landlord of the charging stations, we're still going to have to do maintenance on the units or the charging stations, and whether or not we, as the landlord, make a profit, or whether those profits are realized in the short term, likely not, it doesn't affect, the property manager still gets paid. So, it's following more that example than preventing anybody who gets this from making a profit, in which case, nobody would ever bid on this.
Thank you. Through you, Mayor Nettle, to staff, could, I'm still not clear. Could staff clarify for me, I'm still reading that change as a benefit to the third party because of how it's been amended. Can staff clarify for me what the city's relationship or benefit would be to this, or what that would add to the responsibilities of the third party?
Through your worship, to Councillor Congle. So, the intent of the report was effectively to outsource the operations and maintenance of these charging stations, the entire infrastructure, to a third party, so the city wouldn't have any costs. The city is effectively the landlord, we're still responsible for snow clearing, and, you know, general site maintenance and that sort of thing. But the actual cost of the charging stations, the maintenance, the utilities and all that, would be net zero to the city, because the third-party contract would be responsible for paying us back for the hydro they use. I would expect the third party to make a profit. You know, it's possible there's a not-for-profit out there, I'm not sure. Certainly, we'd open up to anybody to bid, if anybody that wants to bid on it, we would. But that really is the intent.
And sorry, with the addition of that amendment, how does that impact that intent?
Through your worship, to Councillor Congle, I'm, I think it would be challenging for RFP when we put the RFP out on the market, because I think it would be understood that we're trying to restrict profit on a, for-profit entity while also transferring the risk over to them.
Okay. Thank you, Rick. And so, if I understand that, I won't support that amendment.
Sorry, councillor, it's going to go to Councillor Harvey first. Thank you. Councillor Harvey.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Nettle. Actually, my question just got sorted out there, because I had the same concern, that I'm not quite sure that the city would be able to successfully retain a third party if we're going to restrict what they charge now. Like, I mean, even when you look at the Tesla Superchargers, for instance, how they ascertain what the per-kilowatt-hour price is, is beyond me, but Barry actually has the highest, at sixty cents a kilowatt-hour during peak times, whereas there's certain ones in Mississauga that are floating around forty-five, forty-seven, for some reason. But where these third-party chargers really become, I say, kind of out of whack with the, when you compare it to the per-kilowatt-hour, is some of these third-party chargers are charging by the hour, and not by how much hydro you're actually using. And that's where they really can expand, because sometimes the charger might not actually be able to pump as much hydro into that vehicle because of the state of the battery, being too cold, too warm, whatever. And that's where they can really maximize their profits, because a lot of them now are charging by the hour and not by the kilowatt-hour. But I do appreciate the comments from Mr. Pews, because that kind of cleared up what my concerns were with the amendment.
Thank you, Councillor Harvey, Councillor Morales.
Thank you, Mayor Nettle. I'll actually retract the amendment. Mr. Pews, thank you for your clarity, as always. The reason I put the wording there, kind of to indirectly answer Congle's question, because that was a really good question, the reason I kind of attached it to C was earlier in Section One, electric vehicle supply equipment was identified, and then put in brackets, and therefore, used in brackets, EVSE, the supply equipment, basically meaning our electric charging infrastructure. So, in Section C, when I had put the word in there, the third-party turnkey service would be responsible for management of operational aspects related to the EVSE, including, et cetera. So, I, my intent was that the EVSE not really see a profit, that its goal is to maintain it, but that's having your cake and eating it, too. If the city's going to manage it and not make a profit, then you manage it, you can't outsource it to someone else to manage with the expectation of profit, and then have that stipulation. So, your, Councillor Congle, your question was great, and Mr. Pews, thank you for the clarification. So, I will withdraw the amendment, Mayor Nettle. And then now, on the general motion, I'll make one quick comment and let my colleagues continue. This is needed. We've reached the critical point where it's the next step of the industry, and I'm happy to see it go there. And this is something that we, that I could have only aspired to have had this level of uptake in 2016. But moving forward, I hope that, actually, I'll ask a very quick question to Mr. Pews. What's the, without having procurements back, what's the expected length of a contract, if we're one to be awarded, three, five years, or undetermined at this point?
Through your worship, to Councillor Morales, at this point, I wouldn't want to say, I do want to have a word with our purchasing staff. I can tell you, the agreement that we have with Electra is ten years, but it had grant funding attached to it, which is certainly driving the timeframe. So, my general sense is, I'd probably look to five years, but, you know, we can't have it one or two years, because the company's going to have to replace some of this hardware anyways.
Yeah. And Mayor Nettle, thank you for this. So, I'll quickly close my comments. I'll be supportive of this. I like a five-ish, subject-to-change timeline, because it's enough time for them to ramp up and spread out the cost of things that they need to do without handcuffing us. And this industry moves very quickly, in terms of the charging, the amounts, the technology. We're now adopting the Tesla charging head standard, there's an acronym, I'm forgetting of what it's called. But I also, and I can't believe I'm saying words like this, but, Mayor Nettle, I don't want to privatize the profits but socialize the risk, and I cannot believe I just said that. But this is public land, public infrastructure, just the way cities have had chats about privatizing their water, privatizing their hydro. Some things went through, some things didn't. This is how I see this kind of service, albeit on a much smaller scale. So, I will be interested to see what kind of RFPs come back, and hopefully, again, I can't speak on behalf of ten other people, or entire corporation, but the intent on this should be cost recovery, reinvestment in the system, and then just encouragement of an infrastructure.
Thank you, councillor. I have a couple of quick questions, Mr. Pews, to follow up, and then I'm going to go to Councillor Corser. So, A says the third-party turnkey service provider would be responsible for the provision and installation of replacement or upgrading of existing in the downtown with universal charging stations at no cost to the city. And then B says that the third-party turnkey service would be responsible for decisions related to the number and location of the EV stations in consultation with the city. So, is there a situation where they adopt what we've got right now, and they run out their useful life, and then they aren't replaced?
Your worship, we'd have to structure RFP to make sure that doesn't happen. The intent of this clause is, we know that we've got too many charging stations in some locations, frankly, they're just not used very well, and not enough in others. So, that's the intent of this clause, is to allow the third party to move things around where they're required.
Okay. And what type of language are you anticipating to put in place between the city and third-party user with relation to the actual choosing of locations?
Your worship, we already have language within the existing agreement that we have with Electra. We will be looking to mirror that language, I can't tell you what it is off the top of my head, but it is, you know, it's not, this is what we're going to do, you know, we're just telling you. It has to be back and forth, we have to agree with it. But at the same time, we're installing this for the benefit of city residents. So, there's no point in putting it where it doesn't belong, we want to make sure that it gets put where it doesn't belong.
Okay. And who signs off on that, then? Is that yourself?
That would be myself, in the energy management branch.
Okay. With relation to new charging stations, are we essentially saying that we aren't going to be putting any in except with agreement from the outsourced company?
Sorry, your worship, from understanding your question, you're asking, are we, are we giving up our right to install our own, should we choose? Is that what you're asking?
Yes.
I think effectively, we would be. I mean, we can write the RFP so that we can choose to do something, whatever we want. But, I mean, the intent of the staff report is, we don't have the resources to maintain the network as it is. Should council choose to, if you would like us to insert a clause in the contract that, you know, gives us the right to add new charging stations, that will, we can certainly do that.
So, right now, there's about ninety million dollars that the MTO has put out to market for EV charging stations. And as far as I can tell, if we go this route, we're essentially saying that the city won't apply for any of those stations. And I, I'm a little concerned, so, first of all, I'm the first person to say, outsourcing, if possible, and it's not a core service, let's figure it out. My concern is, are we essentially saying that we're only going to apply for those dollars for those stations if this other company agrees to it? And if, if they're, if we're giving up all control relation to a massive infrastructure piece for the city going forward, what does that do to our ability to, you know, ensure that we're at the forefront of the evolution to electric, or one-day hydrogen, or what have you? I certainly, I think the twenty-five thousand dollars in cost on the hydro costs, it's a lot of money, and I'm sure that there's staffing costs that are falling in behind that. Is it in the hundred thousand dollars to manage this program a year right now?
Your worship, at this point, it is not. The hydro costs are the biggest portion. We have replaced a number of heads, I believe there were seven heads that were replaced. Fortunately, they were all replaced under warranty, so there was no cost, but that would be expensive if we had to do it. We've got another fifty-some-odd units that are the same age, so there, probably some of them, I'm guessing, are probably working on borrowed time as well.
Okay, I'll leave my questions, comments. Councillor Corser.
Thank you. Just to pick up on what you were discussing, Mayor Nettle, I'm really wary of giving this kind of power, control, finance, whatever you want to call it, to a third private party, because we, as I read it, it looks like we are giving control over a significant growing market, and having no say in how these things are implemented. Just some questions that I had. So, when something happens, like where these chargers, they will own the charging station, but we own the parking spot.
Absolutely.
So, when we say that, just for further clarification, when we say that we are giving no charge, will we be charging back the maintenance of these parking lots? Will they be having to pay the city for clearing of snow out of these parking places?
Through your worship, no, we're responsible for the parking lot itself, they're responsible for the electric vehicle supply equipment and the charging infrastructure.
Okay, so, so we'll be looking after, we'll be maintaining their, basically, their business?
Through your worship, we're maintaining the entire lot, we're talking, you know, a handful of parking spaces within a lot that we're already maintaining.
Okay. And if, say, somebody decides to charge their car and unplugs it, leaves it in the parking spot, and spends their day at the beach, who looks after removing that car out of that parking place that would be taking up from another charger? Would that be bylaw that would come in to give a ticket? Or would that be on the onus of the company, the private company, that is looking after that charging station, to have that car removed? Who's responsibility for something? If that's in the contract, of course, I'm just learning, just trying to figure out how this would go down. Would we be responsible for that, or would the company be responsible for moving that vehicle?
Through your worship, so, it's actually a provincial offense to park a vehicle that is unplugged in a designated EV parking spot, so it doesn't matter what kind of vehicle it is, any vehicle. So, if somebody leaves it and they're plugged in, that's okay, as soon as they unplug it, it becomes a provincial offense. So, it would be our bylaw staff, and it's a hundred and twenty-five dollar fine.
Oh, wow, I didn't, I didn't know that.
You'd probably only do it once.
Okay, that's learning. And at this time, putting this long, as mentioned to the table, my colleagues about having a long-term commitment on this, giving a vendor, like, free access to how this rolls out. What is the lifespan, do you know, off the top of your head? We always ask so much from our staff. Off the top of your head, for how long a universal charger lifespan is right now? Because it was mentioned before, that was four years, I believe, previous, the first iteration that came, that was put in, that it was about a four-year warranty on them, I believe?
Through your worship, typically, somewhere in that range, four to five years. Often, we end up with maintenance issues like cords, you know, they get broken, and, you know, things that get damaged in vandalism. And as Councillor Morales mentioned, you know, the state-of-the-art changes rather quickly, right? So, there's a lot of features, especially if you're able to, you know, charge for the use and partial use, and whether you're charging for time or for kilowatt-hours. And, you know, there are people that are going to leave their car parked there after it's fully charged, which then removes it from, you know, other people can't use the spot while they're there. So, there are, there is abilities for, or are abilities for the third-party contractors to, to charge for that time, to make sure that it gets used for what it's intended for, and not just an empty parking spot.
Okay, thank you. And I think this is, I have one more question I kind of would like to ask, but I'm not sure if in context of this, but I'll ask and find out. I think through you, Mayor Nettle, to, I believe, Ms. Bamfield, I think, I could be dead wrong on this, if further direction from staff would be good. We get into the situation, as we have further intensification in our downtown core with the buildings that are being built, what levers do we have to pull to ensure that these buildings are adding charging stations within, like, the downtown Toronto Core, I believe? They have charging stations, and many buildings, I suppose, that have charging stations within their parking, parkades, as opposed to having that spill out into public areas that would be used as visitors to our waterfront, which I believe is part of the, if I'm not mistaken, part of the issues that we had at the, down at Heritage. Is there anything that we can say to make sure that they actually put chargers into parking lots?
Through you, Mayor Nettle, to Councillor Corser. It certainly is a comment that we tell all of the property developers through planning comments, and we find, actually, most people do want to put in chargers, so we haven't actually really had to force people to do it, but public parking is always going to be public parking, right?
Yeah, I figured, because it would be more a profit for the building as well. So, loads of questions, and I will save further, I'll take them offline or follow up next week, but thank you.
I see two sets of follow-up questions. Quickly, the, what is the expected return on investment from outsourcing?
So, we are not expecting to make money off this, we're expecting to not incur any costs.
What's the expected return for the third-party organization?
Your worship, that, I can't answer that. That'd be a question that we'd ask as part of the RFP.
And are there other municipalities that have taken this approach?
Yes, your worship, there are.
Is there any way before next week, we can get some of their data with relation to the, you know, rates and returns that these third-party organizations are seeing?
We can certainly try.
Okay. Thank you. Councillor Harvey, then Councillor Morales.
Actually, you just got my question, because I was curious as to, the staff report didn't speak to the other municipalities, but I know there are a boatload of municipalities, especially in the GTA, that have already got partnerships with these various third-parties, so I'd be interested to see what their revenue is from this, or if they're basically just eliminating the cost to the city, but, and that's where, I'm kind of with you on this, too, where this may or may not be a good idea.
Perfect. Thank you, Mayor Nettle. Quickly, to Councillor Corser's, one of your last questions, great question, on the, how much are we doing on the residential side? There was a motion that council supported, that I advocated for in 2018, where it was that the staff strongly asked every rezoning file to add EV roughens. It was a whole question, not the charging station, but the roughen, I consulted with the industry, it's cheaper to do the roughen upfront. And that was passed, and I'm trying to find the motion code, I'll send it to you when I find it. However, it was recommended, sorry, strongly encouraged, because we couldn't mandate it, because mandates are Ontario Building Code. And so, but it was, it was not an issue then, because the government, provincial government at the time, made it part of the Ontario Building Code, and then the government after that got rid of the mandate. So, it, in effect, puts back in the strongly encouraged. Just wanted to provide clarity. To my comments, Mayor Nettle, thank you for the, affording me that. I'm really getting a little bit of cold feet here on this one, based on everybody's questions. I think it might be prudent, A, I'd love for Mr. Pews to come back with, just because other municipalities did it, maybe they did it great, or maybe they got a bad deal. Here's the other one. I love your questions, what's ROI, or what's their expected ROI? I don't see this- I don't see this as bleeding us money. There's many lines of services where you can't, you couldn't give it to somebody quick enough because you don't have the infrastructure, because it's, municipal government is not in the business of, insert line here. This one, in the staff report, I don't see, like, numbers that are scaring me in terms of the carrying cost, the debt costs, the, et cetera. I just see a number grow from 2,000 to eight, to one, to 10, to 15, 25, from a growing market, standardization of plugins, and now finally charging. So I guess my point is, Mayor Nettle, and it's not amendment yet, I want discussion to go, maybe instead of doing RFP for outsourcing everything, the profits, the stations, which I don't know if that goes in contrary to the deal we signed with Tesla in 2018, because they give that infrastructure, and I don't know if they'd be too happy that we're outsourcing it to a third-party for-profit with their brand, but I think maybe it's prudent that we spend some money and get a business report, a consultant to write a business report about, hey, consultant, write the City of Barry business report, where would you relocate them? Would you cluster them where they are? Would you spread them out a little bit? What rate would you charge? And if a consultant, which there's more than enough consultants to do this, gave us a business report and said, here you go, Barry, I can't believe you're going to give this away and sell the grandma's farm, run with it, and now we have a business plan. And if the business plan comes back and says, one of the aspects of that consultant report could be, run us two scenarios, we keep it in-house or we outsource it to somebody who, this is all they do every day, and then we can make a more educated point at that, a more educated decision at that point. But based on the seven-page report here, I don't see that we're carrying significant debt or losing this in a growing market.
Counselor Harvey, then Counselor Hamilton.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Nettle. In doing some research in the last couple of days, actually, because it's been a hot topic, especially with our condo owners, about the lack of infrastructure in the condos, and actually, if you go onto the Condo Authority of Ontario website, it specifically actually has a page just to do with EVs in condominiums, and it specifically states that the corporation can only reject the request for installation if, based on the opinion or report of a qualified professional, the installation would be in violation of Condo Act or any other legislation, the installation would adversely affect the structural integrity of the property, or the installation poses a health and safety risk to the property and its occupants. So in many of those situations, although there might be pushback from their own condo board, unless it meets one of those three criteria, they, in theory, actually, according to the Condo Act, can't refuse it. So maybe there's some condo owners that are going to be watching this tonight, and realistically, I don't see a reason why the condos can't install at least a few chargers that can be used by its residents, because it is crazy in this day and age that they're relying on solely public chargers. And the reality of it is, using a public charger is literally five to six times, actually, more than even that. When I compare what it is to charge at off-peak hours to going to a Tesla supercharger, you're dealing with 8.7 cents a kilowatt-hour opposed to 60 cents a kilowatt-hour, so it's almost 10 times more expensive to charge while you're traveling. So I'll leave my comments at that.
Counselor Hamilton.
Thank you, and through you, Mayor Nettle. I am supportive of the motion. I don't think this falls within the city's scope of core business, nor do I, I don't think it should. I get very nervous when government thinks that they should get into these areas when there's specific third-parties that do this for a living, that have the expertise, the knowledge, that keep up to date with it, so I'm very supportive of outsourcing this. I think this is absolutely the right way to go. My question just is, you made a comment that if there was grant funding available, that we would be precluded from accessing that if we did outsource this, and I just, can you elaborate on that for me? I'm not sure why going into a third-party would preclude us from a partnership with them to seek grant funding. That's my first question for you, and then my second one, again, just in terms of giving...
I have a short memory, so let's answer one at a time. The motion says so. The motion says that we're outsourcing the decision-making with relation to adding or the existing locations.
So it says that the third-party turnkey service would be responsible for decisions related to the number and location of EVSE in consultation with the city. I read that, I don't interpret that as meaning that the city and the third-party can't participate in grant funding opportunities. Maybe I'm misreading this or misinterpreting it, but...
So I think that that's going to take some very creative decision-making in regards to the contract that's eventually awarded through an RFP. My concern is that we're actually giving up the planning side on this. It's not the actual business, it's the planning side. So if you think about, we legislate where certain things take place, I mean, it's not exactly the same, but use a gas station, right? For me, what I would like to see is us to be far enough ahead in this process to be able to know what it looks like, where they're needed, how they're needed, and therefore creating a priority list, a growth pattern with whoever the successful group is. But right now, we're basically saying, manage the ones that we have and let us, you know, you'll consult with us when you're ready or want to grow. It doesn't say the city is going to determine the growth of the market.
Yeah, I guess, respectfully, I guess I just interpret it differently in terms of in consultation with the city. To me, and maybe it's just a change of wording, more of a partnership, the city and the EVSE or the city and the third-party turnkey service will work together to identify. I mean, for me, that's just a very small language change, maybe, to make it more of a partnership, and we're looking at growth opportunities, new location opportunities, but otherwise, I really would be hesitant for us to be keeping this within our core services. I just think this is not an area we need to get into, and we need to be careful about what the city's core services are. Let's work on those rather than expanding into other avenues that really, I don't think this is in our forte, but my two cents.
How much is the infrastructure worth that we have in the City of Barry right now? What was the originating investment across the 50?
Your worship, excellent question. I wish I could answer it off the top of my head, but I can't. It was, I'm guessing, a couple hundred thousand dollars at this point, probably more.
Counselor Morales?
Thank you, Mayor Nettle. I was just consulting Counselor Harvey. I may be off by about 20,000 or 30,000, but it was $250,000 to $300,000, and it was at no cost to the City of Barry taxpayer. Tesla paid for the concrete, the installation, absolutely everything.
And with relation to the question about Tesla, was there anything inside their agreement that stopped us from allowing others to profit off of it?
Your worship, none whatsoever. Once they were provided to the city, the city owns them outright. We can do what we want with them.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Corser.
Just a quick question, through you, to, I guess, the clerk's office, not sure. When this contract being drawn up, when we talk, this potential contract being brought, when we talk about where these charging stations go, would that come before council at all for any kind of a zoning? Or would we have, would they have to get certain zoning or certain permission, if you will, from council to be able to put them, say, in a new parking lot, add them or move them or what have you because of zoning issues?
Through you, Mayor Nettle, to Counselor Corser, no, it wouldn't be, the locations where they would be located would not be coming back to council for any decisions.
I'm sorry, could you please repeat that?
Sorry. Through you, Mayor Nettle, to Counselor Corser, the decision on where these EV supply, EV equipment would be located would not come back to council for any decisions.
Oh, so it would not be a zoning issue of any comment?
If there was any zoning issues or any questions with, like, development services, traffic, that would be an internal discussion.
Okay, thank you.
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Nettle. Through you to Mr. Pugh. Would the wording of the RF, because I actually believe we're not far away, like, some of the concerns from some of the council and ones that are in support. Like, in most franchise clause, there's accelerant expansion and stuff like that. Would there be something along the lines of that? So if we, as the city, felt there was a need for a pocket that was just developed, a plaza or something that, would there be wording in the RFQ or RFP that we could not force but demand that there was a growth?
Through your worship, to Deputy Mayor Thompson, we would certainly look to put language into the contract that allows us to work with whoever our partner is to install, you know, equipment where it's best suited for the city. And another comment I would like to make is, the part two of the motion here, so the city would not be turning over kind of control of where these installations go to a third-party, the city still has to agree to it, and that's what part two of the clause says. So we put the specific locations within the agreement itself. Any changes to those locations are in amending agreement to the contract. The city has to agree to it. Now, we do look to the contractor to identify, you know, where is best used, maybe some areas they're overused and they need more, other places we don't have as much. So that's the intent of part two of the clause here, is for the contractor to identify where they're being used, where they're not being used, where they should be used. But again, the city has to agree to this.
And maybe just to follow up, yeah, that would be my only concern, that if they, let's say, brought in 50, and as we grow, we would like to see an expansion of the service, and they were maybe not in a position, then we would have to go out and do it ourselves, so now we would have, like, dueling kind of services. So that's why I would like to see wording in the procurement side of it that we could ask and they'd have to abide by or be obligated to install more as we need them.
Through your worship, we can certainly work on the language for that. I mean, ultimately, I think if there's not a business case for the private part, for the private sector, we may end up having to do it ourselves, which we can certainly do, you know, within the terms of any agreement.
Counselor Nixon, just before we go to you, so is there an opportunity to separate the capital side from the operating side of this, in the sense that the capital investment? If we have the opportunity to receive, I'm not advocating that the city pay for it, but just be clear, but if we have the opportunity to go out and get federal or provincial investment into these charging stations, that essentially we can determine where they go and they have to manage them?
Yes, there absolutely is that opportunity. It's very similar to what we did with Elektra.
Okay. And that's going to be in the RFP, then? Perfect. That placates me a lot. Counselor Nixon.
Thank you, Mayor Nettle. Through you to Mr. Pugh. Based on what I read, obviously, the third-party provider is going to, excuse me, the third-party provider is going to benefit, the more chargers are out there and the more they're utilized, the more money they're going to make. So would it be safe to say that rather than us going to them suggesting new sites, it's more than likely they're going to be coming to us? They're probably going to be ahead of the curve from us, saying, hey, this subdivision here, this, that, this plaza, you know, we want to put one here, we want to put five here. So it's more likely that they are going to be the ones pushing the new locations than us, correct?
It's possible, for sure. I think it all depends physically where they're located. You know, we will know the city growth and city development better than a firm that happens to be located someplace else, but I think it goes both ways. So I think if we have an identified need and identified demand for it, we can take it to them. If they've got an identified location where they think it would make sense for them, for their business, that's fine, too.
Correct, thank you. And yes, so obviously, planning is going to have a little more foresight in what's coming down the road a few years than they would, so there, obviously, there would be a lot of working together. But they would also have the usage figures to, if there is a location that's not being utilized, then they will have the right to come to the city and say, hey, we got 10 chargers here, they're being used 5% of the time, we want to pull them, so that would be more there. They would come back to us and suggest that they be pulled, or we would have the final say, or they would be able to move them at will.
Certainly, we have the final say because we have to agree to the change, but I think to be reasonable, you know, if they're not being used, if they could be better used someplace else, then I would look to put them someplace else.
Thank you. And just one more, the, my understanding, there's two, basically, two types of chargers that they're correct, there's the, I'm not sure the correct term, but there's one that are kind of high-speed or fast chargers, I'm not sure what they're called. There's three, okay. Obviously, I do not have an EV, but, so the type of unit proposed would be, is there such, like, the universal, so they could be used for anything, or what type of charges would they be looking at?
We would be targeting, because of city facilities, the type-three chargers use a lot of power, and we simply don't have it, we can't provide it. You know, if a third-party were to come back and say, listen, we want to run our own hydro service in, do you mind? Probably not. You know, they'd have to come up with a business case, but it's going to be really expensive. So what we have now are type-two, and I would expect we would continue with the type-two.
Okay, so thank you. And based on my earlier comments, the, I think with a third-party, it's safe to say that if we were to implement something today, that, you know, five years from now, we would have considerably more chargers for residents through a third-party than we would by doing it ourselves? Your opinion?
I was going to say, is that a statement or a question? I would suggest where the market is going, we would likely have more because there will be more of a demand.
Okay, thank you for that.
Counselor Hamilton, then Counselor Corser, but first, we're going to go to Ms. James Reed.
Thank you, Mayor Nettle. I just wanted to clarify that, I just pulled up the EV Charge Ontario program that you're referencing earlier, and just in terms of the discussion, it does look like that not just municipal governments, but businesses and not-for-profits can also apply, and if you don't own the property, you would need a written approval from the owner of the property, and that the minimum years would have to be a five-year contract. But just in terms of the conversation and the question that you asked, or that was asked by Counselor Hamilton.
Thank you, Ms. James Reed.
Thank you. Ms. James Reed was quick to the draw and said exactly what I was going to say, so thank you for looking that up on our behalf.
Counselor Corser.
Through you, Mayor Nettle, to Mr. Pugh. Would this contract be written up, like, further, would, basically, would be giving exclusive rights to one company to do electric chargers on city property, correct? Or would that be opened up to more than one vendor for competition reasons, like, would, because pricing, basically, we would be giving exclusive rights to one company to put charging stations on city property, and I'm concerned about, we are not allowed to dictate the market, but I'm wondering if there would be unsensitized, they would not be incentivized to be competitive for those spaces?
Through your worship, to Counselor Corser, that would not be my recommendation to have exclusive rights. We would want to retain them. I would want the ability to give or assign sites or negotiate sites, new sites and relocations with our third-party. But exactly to your point, if, you know, perhaps sometime in the future, you know, the rates are not acceptable, or we think we can do better with another party, I want the ability to be able to open it up to the market, if it makes sense.
Thank you.
I'm seeing other comments or questions, so Mr. Pugh, you're going to come back next week with some information that you can ascertain from other municipalities, and could you also provide us with perhaps some language in the next week that would be put into the RFP that would allow the city to push ahead with its own additional units on city land with no penalty related to, relate to the contract with the third-party, just so we have that fully panned out? And other than that, I think everything else has been cleared up for me. So call the vote, all those in favor, and it carries, those against, it's approved.
That was the update from the General Committee meeting. Thank you for watching.